Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Our first item will be a pledge to the flag. Please join me. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have had no executive sessions since the last meeting, so at this point I would like to open up the floor to communication from citizens. So if there's anyone in the audience or anyone on Zoom, anybody on Zoom that would like to address the board, please click the raise hand button in the lower right-hand corner of your Zoom screen. Anyone? All right, then, moving on, engineering reports. First, our environmental engineering report, Diana.
There are no updates or additions to the report. Please send them in if you have any questions.
Anybody? Gentlemen? Thank you. That was quick. All right, next we have our civil engineering report. You can do it. You have the microphone. You don't have to. You're a privileged member of the board.
There are no additions to the environmental engineers' report, civil engineering report.
Anybody have anything? Charles, Don? All right, that was easy. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda items A through E. Are there any items on here that anyone would like to have removed for further discussion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through E.
This is Charles. I second.
Yes, sir. Did you get that? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Did you get that?
We got that. Subdivision and land development. First is LD 2022-0003, Eastern Boulevard Plaza, 2424 Eastern Boulevard. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen, and persons online. So before we tonight is a land development plan for the Eastern Boulevard Plaza. I believe you're all very familiar with this project. You saw it several times in the conditional use process. We are proposing a 9,200 square foot addition, a standalone addition at Eastern Boulevard Plaza. We've gone through the review process with staff, and we have a pretty clean plan at this point with a couple of waivers and a recommendation from staff for approval. So in order to keep this meeting short, I will turn it over to you. Ask any questions and whether we'd like to.
So my understanding is we've come to an agreement by the bottom of this, and we are at a recommendation to forward.
That is correct.
Anybody have any questions? Charles, Don?
No.
Uh, George? Would you like to take a stab at this?
Mr. Chairman, relative to plan number LD 2022-0003, Eastern Boulevard Plaza, I recommend that the township grant the following modifications and waivers, items one through six on our planned tracking sheet.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, relative to plan number LD 2022-0003, I recommend approval of the plan subject to the following conditions of approval, as itemized as items one through four on our planned tracking sheet.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific.
We're done.
That is the fastest I have ever gotten approval of this township. Thank you very much.
We did all of the pre-work to make it right. So everybody sat. Thank you. Good to see you. All right, next we have authorization to advertise public hearing for zoning ordinance text amendments, East Market Street and Mount Zion Road.
If I may, Board Supervisors, just to give you a little bit of synopsis here, this has come in front of the board early in regards to showing the possibility of potential zoning amendments, particularly for the Mount Zion Commons project. However, the zoning ordinance amendments apply to the township as a whole, but they are not just applicable to the site that they're speaking to in regard to the Mount Zion Commons project. This has been in front of the planning commission. It's there twice. Solicitor, in your summary, that the planning commissioners voted four to one to disapprove the zoning ordinance amendments. However, wanted to say to be clear that tonight is not the action evening for the Board Supervisors in regard to the zoning ordinance amendment. It's only for the advertisement and scheduling of a public hearing to have the opportunity for citizenry to chime in and provide comment to the Board Supervisors in regard to the proposal in front of. However, we do have the representatives of Mount Zion Commons here tonight to address the board in a abbreviated manner to at least provide some context to what they provided, in addition to the planning commissioners in the presentation that was provided to you as well.
So we had four things on the list, I believe, from the board, and the board had decided that we did not want to give ourselves the ability to change zoning on the fly for condition. Is that a major thing that we disagreed with last time? Is that correct? We had.
Yes, you, we, you didn't want to give yourselves the ability to change the town center overlay where you could change things on the fly, approve things on the fly.
And then I think I read in here that there were a couple of tweaks to this done through the process since then, so I'd be interested to hear exactly what they are. Don't need to dive into the whole thing, I believe, because I think as a whole, we were in agreement to move forward with advertising. Please.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So there were, there were four changes to the ordinance since the last time we saw it. One is, was discussed, is we remove the provision that we had in the initial draft related to the conditional use modifications. Secondly, we had intended to include in the draft that you saw in June, based on our staff meeting, a removal of provision that limits gas station canopies to 10 feet. So we did add that in based on the staff meeting we had had in June. Basically, the understanding being that that doesn't meet current industry standards to be wide enough to keep people sheltered from the rain. So that was added in. There were two non-substantive changes that were made after the July Planning Commission meeting, based on solicitors' recommendations, and they were the same recommendations from Mike Schaefer, York County Planning Commission. One was that we changed the spelling of drive-through from the THRU to be consistent with your ordinance, so it's D-H-R-O-G-H. And the second was we slightly changed the wording of those drive-through provisions to clarify that we were not further restricting where restaurants in general could be located, but they were, we were expanding and allowing restaurants, for example, with drive-throughs in certain locations. And we just changed the way it was wording to be consistent with really how we had worded the provision for the gas and sales. And that was again based on recommendation from planning commissions, solicitor, as well as York County. So those are the changes that have been made since we last saw.
And Charlie, you're good with those?
Right, and you don't think that they're substantive or not have to go through that process?
So the ordinance that was submitted to the planning commissions had already had the conditional use removed, and it had the canopy stuff added in there. That deletion was already, so the only changes we made was the spelling of drive-through and rewording the provision, just to provide clarification on the fact that we were allowing for the drive-throughs in certain locations. I don't think it was substantive. It was just a way, the way it was worked.
Okay. Yeah, then I don't see any issue.
Gentlemen, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, it's Charles. I do have more or less a technical question. Could someone walk me through how the mechanics of section 3.1 actually work? So that, I'd like a little clarity, please. This is how the height can be increased by one foot for each and every foot that the width of each seeds.
If I may, so your ordinance currently has this provision. So right now, your ordinance has a height limit of 45 feet. It can be increased by an additional foot for every additional foot of setback. So right now, if you're in the mixed-use zone, and you want to have a building that's 50 feet high, you have to increase your setback by five feet. There is no limit to that currently in your ordinance. So what we are suggesting here with the height limitation is to take that base height from 45 to 55, just add a little bit of extra height to the buildings you allow in the mixed-use. But then you could still go beyond that, just like you currently can in the ordinance, by adding additional setback for each one foot of height. We also added in that there is a height limit, since you currently do not have a height limit anymore.
And that's the 100 feet then? That is the limit?
Correct.
All right. I also point out, at least on the copy that I saw on Novus, that in the first sentence of the ordinance proper, that we have the township of Franklin, should be Springitzberry. So we'll want to make that change.
That's not substantive, is it?
Franklin, it is, yes.
Gentlemen, one question as well. Keith? Yes, I believe I heard that you are comfortable fighting fires in a building up to 100 feet tall, that we have the ability and the equipment to do that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. All right, friends.
That was my only concern, is that there was a, a lower amount.
Any other questions?
I have one question. I'm not sure who answers this, but that same section where we talk about you can increase one foot for every additional foot of setback, what's the benefit to Springitzberry Township of increasing that setback?
So just so I understand, is the question why you even have that requirement in there for the increased setback, for the increased height?
Right. Yeah, right. Yeah.
I don't know that I can answer that question, because it's something that's in your existing ordinance. It's fairly typical to see in zoning ordinances in this area. You're not the only municipality that has a similar provision. So I'm assuming it's something that comes from apparently standard planners who draft these ordinances. I don't know, Randall, if you've seen that.
The only thing that comes to mind, for some reason, is something would happen to a said structure, whatever it may be, that allows additional space for the building leading one way or another goes that, that direction, the yard spaces there for it to fall in or collapse.
More room for the building to fall down.
I think it's, if I'm thinking about it correctly, it has to do with whatever structure it may be, not particularly to a building per se, it is a structure.
So I've seen it a lot in cell tower provisions.
Yes.
That with the cell towers, that if they're over a certain height, they have to be set back a further distance, or that your setback has to be at least as high as the height of the cell tower.
I have seen that in United States.
Yeah. And again, I'm pretty sure your township has something similar in their commercial zone that allows some amount of height increase with increased setback. But I don't know that, I don't know if there really is a benefit when you're talking about in terms of a building like this. The reality is, if your setback is 15 feet and your building is allowed to be 45 feet anyways, I guess if that building goes over, even if you're not over the 45-foot limit, you're, you know, I don't know that that argument, you know, the safety issue is, is an issue. So I guess I don't have a good answer to that question.
I like Don's explanation.
For it to fall down.
I mean, I would imagine that proportionally, there becomes a law of diminishing returns on that one. Like after a while of a certain height, you can't push your setback any further. So.
It makes itself limited. Any other questions? I think before us is a recommendation to advertise.
Yeah, and by no means does a recommendation to advertise commit us to approving this ordinance. This is not, get some feedback from the community on a very, very popular intersection.
Guys, one thing I, not necessarily originally, but project really, I did want to update the board, take this opportunity if I could. I just want to let you know, my client is currently in negotiations with Columbia Gas to acquire or to do a land swap for that district building that is adjacent to the modern air. Just wanted to let you know if we're able to move forward with the project, and if that negotiation comes through. I just, you mentioned the important corner, and it made me think that would be really something that we all think would make this project even, even better, if we get rid of that little Columbia Gas building. I think that was one of maybe Mark's ideas early on, so appreciate that.
That's a good.
Stacy, can I ask, did you have your initial meeting with PennDOT, and how did they react to the right-in, right-outs?
Yes, so there was a scoping meeting with PennDOT at the beginning of July. I think the meeting went overall pretty well. There was some feedback. We're going to be making some tweaks on things. I think we're at a point where we're looking at Mount Zion, you know, right-in, right-out only, or maybe left-in. Yeah, why don't you jump in on that, John?
Good evening. So at the conclusion of this scoping application meeting with PennDOT, they had asked us to study 10 intersections. So we did complete the study of those intersections. We did video feed and all of those. So we've collected all the data, the process of going through the data, the traffic engineer is, and through that we'll have a better understanding of cues and formulation of the actual design. But the, as far as the access on Mount Zion, as it turns out, the head of District Eight at PennDOT lives in the community, so he's very familiar with Mount Zion. He was okay, generally speaking, of the conceptual, conceptual access that we pose, which is three-quarter movement on Mount Zion, restricting left-out. So because we are posing a dedicated, but currently traveling southbound, so. And on East Market Street, they didn't want to commit to full access at this time, but we're proposing it because we have a center turning lane there, and at least a 200-foot bay as you're traveling eastbound from the end of the existing median to the proposed access point on East Market. We have roughly 200 feet. So we have the distance that's, and satisfied there. Now it's just on the queue. If there's enough distance, rather, the gaps, the gaps in traffic. So that's what we're analyzing. We're going to know in the next few weeks as to whether that could be a full access or be limited to a three-quarter, like Mount Zion.
Thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen? You have a motion?
I have a motion to authorize staff to advertise and schedule a public hearing.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Email me the latest.
Yes, absolutely.
Favorably, on the ordinance that I have here, the underlying, underlining, I'm assuming, is efficient.
Right.
So maybe just for underlying, representing issues.
Sure, absolutely.
Communication from Supervisors. Do we have anything tonight? What's your report?
I just wanted to update the board on just a couple of zoning. First, if you recall at the bees, and, you know, after the meeting, I spoke with our zoning officer, and the notice of violation that was sent was based on complaints. So I spoke with Mr. Kaylee, communicated to him that because it was complaint-driven, there wasn't much that we could do, that the process kind of has to play out. So I think they've applied for zoning variance to all of these, so they can make their argument to the zoning hearing board until we get more information about beekeeping parameters and things like that. So I just wanted to update the building. Apparently, they have a lot of beehives, and in the front yard, I'm interested.
We want to have a little discussion on it from our chat earlier.
Well, about whether it's a hobby, and whether it's considered to be agricultural. That might be an argument they could make to the zone, if that's the case.
And apparently, I didn't understand the full implication of what they were talking about, their working points. They certainly did not make that account. So I guess.
No.
Oh, they may not have known. Okay. That's, that's a good possibility. So Charlie and I were talking earlier that I was looking through the agricultural designation, and it appeared that the agricultural use is for profit. So I don't know if they actually sell any of the honey from their hobby or not, but one thing that I think that could be taken into account is whether or not it's actually being done for profit. Because they was, they string a whole bunch of things together. Fruit trees is one. Does that mean you can't plant a cherry tree or an apple tree in your yard? I don't know. There are a whole bunch of things that fall under agriculture that somebody, as a homeowner, could go to home, you buy and put in the yard, and it might be a violation. So I want to be careful about how we interpret and how we word things. If we truly do have a problem with bees, is it something that we would identify that for a hobby, it has to be certain setback from maybe your yard, say, the back of the house, not in the front of the house, not more than a certain number of pines, or something like that? Just so that it's, it's contained a little bit without really taking a right away from somebody who has. So it's something that regardless of how the zoning hearing might turn out, I think we need to revisit a little bit more thoroughly. And it's always interesting, after you have some perspective on things, how, how you might learn new information about what's really going on behind the scenes and what some of the true problems might be. I don't know if anybody was stunned that prompted, or is it just that we don't like them having beehives in the front yard?
I don't know what the nature.
So, yeah.
The second one is, and you may or may not be aware, but you go to an alpaca farm, a long travel on the road, which is fine. It's in the RR District, which is pretty. But the county did receive complaints about traffic and things. And so the zoning officer did an investigation, and the owners are doing a number of things. I think at one point, they were, they had a cottage, it was supposed to be a shed, but it turned into a cottage, and they were sort of renting it out. It would be the, I'm saying, is that stop, they were allowing campers in. It's a fairly large traffic, they were allowing campers in. I'm saying, is that stop, but they were also allowing wedding venues. They were doing like educational classes and field trips, things of that nature, which sort of kind of moves you into agritourism type things. So we sent a courtesy letter and got a, we got a response, and then we met with their attorneys trying to, first off, tell them exactly what's going on, then to try to sort of frame it. Because I think some of these activities, they're also, I mean, she's also boarding alpaca. So if you have an alpaca and don't want it at the house, you can board it.
The TP's too.
What's that addressed? So it's a whole conglomeration. We're trying to sort out.
Farm.
Right. And they raised, you know, the April legislation about, you know, you've got to be careful how you regulate agriculture. And so we're sort of tiptoeing through some of these issues. So, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. It's awesome. Caught wind of it, or somebody contacted. So we wouldn't do that. And that's all I have. If I may, just for a moment, bouncing back to the bees, we did get an email just this week from a gentleman that's been heading this effort for the AP areas. We're looking to get together on the week of the 19th of this month, to kind of reopen this and try to find out what we really want to get accomplished in the context of the zoning ordinance, and how we can characterize that for, to my sense that it will be. But obviously, folks are vying for the zoning hearing board, fire-tending, being in front of this board. So just letting you know that that's getting re-initiated weekly.
I will just reinforce something. My son is in pest control, and he said that honeybees do not attack humans unless somebody attacks their hive. They are very docile. They cause very few problems, and they are very essential for the crops and the plants that we have around. So just for general awareness. Managers' report.
The only thing I want to add to my written report is we were notified.
The only thing I want to add to my written report is we were notified earlier this week by DCNR that we were successful in the grant application for the Camp Security Master Plan. So we were awarded $43,200 for that, for that. And so.
Park, there was one I had to report. In the midst of, at least began some arguing discussions. Firstly, I'd find it helpful to know what we're proposing on the other side of the road.
I'll get that.
Mister Chairman, this is Charles, I did have one technical question on an item on the manager's report. That is that cost-sharing matter with PennDOT, I think we'll address that easily early, early, later in the meeting. Mark, is this just, this is nothing to do with our development of the police station across the corner, this is just purely coincidental when they went to go to pay, but they, they discovered this, they need to move that and found our infrastructure there too? Is that?
Correct, totally unrelated to the project.
Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, ordinances and resolutions, Resolution 2022-39, authorization to enter into utility relocation and cost-sharing agreement with PennDOT for Mount Zion Road resurfacing project.
Mister Chairman, this is Charles, I move for adoption of Resolution 2022-39, allowing the township manager to enter into an agreement with PennDOT as outlined.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Resolution 2022-40, authorizing township manager to sign all agreements with PennDOT relating to the East Market Street ADA compliance, pedestrian accessibility, and sidewalk improvements project.
Adoption of Resolution 2022-40.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody want to address the old business listing?
I do want to bring up an update real quick.
Okay.
The Sundale Schoolhouse topic that's in the month. What we, we met several times, we, we, me, Danny Cravill, Chief King, and John Gianni. The next step that we took is we put the portable signs that most of us are familiar with. When we drive through town, you see a crosswalk and it's that sign, sign that's in the middle of the roadway saying, stop for pedestrians and crosswalk. We put one of those on each end of the intersection, just as another physical item to alert people that there's stops on it.
So. And when it's in the middle of the road, you might actually hit it, they paid a lot more attention to it.
I would hope, but we just put those in last week, so I just wanted to update the work on.
Good.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch where this is located.
The intersection of Sundale and Schoolhouse Lane.
Thank you. Anything else for old business? New business, acknowledging receipt of our MMOs for police pension, non-uniform pension, and Teamsters pension.
Motion to approve the knowledge receipt of three MMOs as outlined on the agenda. You can see.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.